And we are back in open session once again, sorry for the little delay. First order of business as usual is audience sharing. Anyone have anything to share? Okay then. We got along to new business. First item is the appointment of a new member to the municipal technology committee. And we have, our nominee is Jeff Bradbury. I think he's here. Hi Jeff. Jeff was one of the original candidates for this position. And I liked him from the get-go. He is a CISSP, which is a, I don't remember exactly what it stands for, it's a security professional. Want to tell us what that stands for?
Interpried Information System Security Professional.
Thank you. And, you know, that's like a very high level of security professional, and I think it's something that we really need on this committee. And I think everyone knows, security is a huge issue when it comes to any kind of technology. So, I thought he was a very strong candidate, and I hope you agree. I think your, his resume is in the packet. And that's about all I have to say. He's here, if anyone has any questions.
I did reach out to Andy Mariotti, who is the school committee's appointee liaison to the MTC, and to echo your comments about Mr. Bradbury's experience. I think Andy's comments was, whoa, he has a lot of experience. This is gonna be great. So, I don't think a higher comment could have been made, a more positive comment than someone who does this and is absorbed in this on the school level each and every day. And so, he was very excited to think that you would be joining the team, the committee.
The technical evaluation involved?
Whoa. I think it stands for something like CCIS, but I'm not sure.
Yeah. By the way, the MTC also went over his credentials and approved, basically. And I should mention that the reason we're doing this is because the previous appointee is moving out of town, so we have a position to fill. So, that's it. Any questions? How about a motion then?
I'll move that we appoint Jeffrey Bradbury as the school committees, as a school committee's representative on the municipal technology committee.
For a three-year term? For a three-year term?
For a three-year term.
One second.
All right. Any discussion? All on paper? Very good. Congratulations Jeff. Welcome.
Mr. Dozen, can I just add, this is from Mr. Hagerty to Mr. Bradbury. If you are moving or heading to the town first thing in the morning, if you could wait till 8:30 so we could send the vote to Mr. Hagerty, which is an official part of the process, before he can swear you in, we have to share with him the vote and just your address and email and all of that which we have from your resume. So, that will be there by about 8:30 in the morning. So, if you have time to stop at the Red Vine for a coffee or something beforehand, that would be great, and we'll make sure that it's there so anytime after 8:30 you can be sworn in by the town clerk.
You need to stop where?
Town Hall. Mr. Hagerty, the town clerk, needs to officially swear you in to be a member of this committee.
That's anytime before the MTC meets?
Now, I think that if, depending on your schedule, if you couldn't do it before 8:30 in the morning, you could certainly do it the next day, anytime.
Yeah.
Now, this is more to keep you from going over and then finding out that, you know, what you went over for, town clerk won't grant it.
As long as you get sworn in before the MTC meets, then you're fine.
I'll make sure they have it.
Okay.
We've had people so excited that they've been there when Jim arrives. And we haven't had a chance to send over the vote yet, so that's important.
All right. Thanks again Jeff. And moving on to the 2018-2019 school committee subcommittee and liaison assignments. In the packet, I plugged in whoever got in touch with me with requests, some who didn't, and I put them in anyway. Roger?
Not to be specific.
It actually gets back to a conversation we had that you may or may not remember about, you were participating in those first two on capital planning and operational budget. So, yeah, Jennifer, you also had posited the idea that you might participate, so that's why the question mark is there, but...
Yes, I'm fine with being on it.
Okay. So, that brings up payroll warrants. This is just going to central office and signing some payrolls and warrants every once in a while as needed. Oh, the payroll one only takes one signature, is that right?
Two signatures. We've been asking for two on the payroll warrant, I think, but one would do it. I think we're also, you're probably gonna get called more often. Right now, our warrants are only issued maybe once or twice. As we move down to the end of the year, we're probably gonna be doing a warrant every week as we close out the budgets. And then, as next year continues, probably more frequently, because that then posts to the budget and it gives us more current information, the faster the, the sooner we're able to process this, so.
But wasn't there some...
Don't be surprised if we call you more often.
Wasn't there one that Jerry was, he was the primary guy for, because he lived nearby?
He lived in back of the school.
So, I don't know if anyone wants to take his place, but...
I live very close to the school, so I'd be happy to do it.
Very good. Policy development, we have Katura, we could use one more there.
I think we need one more.
We have to have one.
To have forum in policy, so.
It's a great one.
Anyone? It's really fun.
And important.
Can you, it is important.
Tell us a little bit of, like, what's the commitment, time commitment to it?
How often do we meet this year? I wanna say...
Typically, we meet around four times a year.
Four times evening?
A year.
What's that? Four times a year? Oh. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, for no more than, like, a couple hours, right?
Yeah, you have popcorn and...
Yeah. Okay, you can sign me up for that, I'll do that.
Excellent. Thank you. What else? Curriculum review committee, we could use one there.
I can do that.
Jennifer, thank you. The liaisons are all fine with one person. Strategic planning committee reauthorizing in 2020, so we can wait on that.
We may or may not, yeah, have that this year.
I think that's it, right? We don't need the full-day kindergarten, we're pretty much done there in the school building, we're not building anything, so...
Doing driveways this year. No buildings.
Okay. We don't need to vote on this, right? We just do it. All right. The next item is the drug abuse resistance education, the DARE program expansion.
So, this is just a little bit of information about something that I think we've been talking about Keith for many, many years, and been having an active dialogue with the police for several years. And that is to move and expand the DARE program into the middle school, where students continue to be confronted with challenging situations and difficult decisions. And so, working very closely with both Chief Polis and Chief Liver, we are moving the DARE program into our middle schools, which would be grade seven. So, they would have it in grade five, and then they would have this experience in grade seven, and they'd move on to the high school, so it's about two years. The curriculum materials and the training is actually a shared experience with the police and our district, the school committee. The chief is sending Officer Aaron to be trained this summer. So, he will be sharing the responsibility and the joy of launching the DARE program with our resource officer extraordinaire, Kevin Landry, who has been doing the DARE program for some time. Over the summer, the work around curriculum and defining the curriculum and how that will be scheduled with our students will be taking place with our middle school principals. And we hope in the early September second week, we will be sharing with you some updates on what that looks like in terms of scheduling and opportunities. But, did wanna put some information in the packet, really it's just informational for you to take a look at. It is an expansion to some extent of our social, emotional health, behavioral supports for our students, but also school safety as well. So, I want to really extend kudos to Keith for taking this on, and also, and for making it work, and I know it will work so well, but also for our police department and their continued collaboration and focus on our student population. So, very exciting. And more to follow in September, when we have more details. They did also say they'd be happy, they being Chief Polis and the DARE officers, to come to school committee, which I think would be kind of exciting, to have them here.
Great.
Keith, did you wanna...
Kevin and I have had this conversation for a long time, and it's finally coming to fruition, so it's exciting. It's gonna link well with our seventh-grade health curriculum, and our health teachers have already met with Officer Landry and Officer Richardson to kinda get the ball rolling. So, we're excited to see what it brings in the fall.
Can I, are you tracking whether or not the program, or any data on what it does or in terms of how kids do after the program or through the program? Any way of tracking improvement?
Not formally, not yet. We haven't, you know, we've had certain opportunities that have come up where kids have said, yeah, I remember that from DARE in fifth grade. I mean, aside from some anecdotal stuff like that, nothing formal.
I think it's great. I mean, this has been sort of a gap in the whole program, as you mentioned, and so it's great that we're filling it. So, do you think, is this, I know you're gonna be planning this over the summer, but do you expect it'll be during school day that they'll meet, or afterwards it will?
Yeah, it'll be during, it'll be supplemented as part of the seventh-grade health curriculum.
Okay.
And it'll be wedged into that, which is already, is sort of a part of already, so it's merging and just supplementing and adding on to what already exists.
Okay.
Do you think it'll happen this school year, or will it take a year to...
It should be able, good to go for the fall.
Okay.
It's planned launch for September.
Planned launch for September.
I did wanna comment on Jen's question a little bit. We do have longitudinal disciplinary, discipline data that we have to submit to DESI.
Yeah, true.
And so, to some extent, that is a form of assessment in terms of looking at what kinds of disciplinary infractions are, you know, take place, and having that, you know, shared conversation through the grades, and looking at that progression of either growth or not, depending on the situation. I also think that the seventh-grade module, Keith, may have an embedded assessment tool in it. I think that was part of the literature that I saw.
Did hear that, but I hadn't seen that, yeah.
So, that's something we'll be able to take a look at. But we do, and we are required to report discipline data to DESI every year.
Yeah, no, that's great. I mean, and I asked just because I know there's been some controversy with DARE in the past. I know this new version is more, it's scientific, empirically based, so I was just curious if we see those differences over time.
And Officer Richardson's gonna be getting that latest training this summer, so I'm sure he's gonna bring some new information into the fold as well.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Anything else on DARE? All right, thank you. And next is legislative update.
I just have a brief circuit breaker update. Not that it impacts the K8 directly in terms of our conversation, it definitely impacts it directly in terms of cost for bus transportation, but we have heard, although I haven't seen the percentage yet, that regional transportation at the regional level has been increased, which trickles down in terms of overall cost to the K8s. But circuit breaker funding still, it's, they're hanging in there. This is another letter from MAS S informing us that Chairman Sanchez, Spilka, and the conference committee members are still going for that 75% level in FY19, and haven't seen too much finalized around the circuit breaker conversation for this year. They did imply in this that they had seen an increase in circuit breaker, but we haven't seen anything definitive come our way in terms of a percent increase or, you know, in the FY18 year. So, it's nice that there's still a lot of active dialogue about returning it to 75% in the FY19 budget. So, that was the latest update, that was as of June 6th, so. And there's still no formal budget approved yet from the State House, and that's always something to be watchful of.
Okay. That brings us to old business, kindergarten transition update.
Clayton and I met this week and reviewed the state of kindergarten in terms of student enrollments, projected revenue, projected potential tuition adjustments. We've been using August as a sort of a benchmark timeframe, and I'm fairly confident that we'll be able to make some adjustments to tuition by August 1st. We're still hopeful that it will be in the $2,000 range. And I think one of the things that we have to consider as we move towards a tuition-free model is building in a sustainability factor in those financial tuition shifts that we make, that allows us to sustain for a year in case we have to add a staff member, because enrollments are moving up. We've got some movement right now in terms of our class enrollments, which would allow us to sort of take in an increase number in FY20 should that happen, which means we wouldn't have to have these swings in the tuition revolving account. So, we're trying to maintain a reasonable consistent decrease such that we are able to sustain any increases in tuition over the two years after we go to free tuition. So, there would be no significant impact on the operational budget as we go into budget season, and nor would we be looking at sort of decreasing tuition and then increasing it the next year. So, it's not just a one-year snapshot that we're looking at, we're looking at sort of a long-term funding reduction analysis, so that we're not having those swings. So, when we look at 19's tuition, we're, I'm also looking at 20 and 21, and factoring in, can we absorb any increases in enrollments so that we wouldn't have to make those adjustments within two years after going to free full day? And so, it looks like we're still moving on that $2,000, which would really be a significant reduction from $3250 just one year ago, because last year was the first year we were able to reduce. So, there will be a reduction, but again, we're holding firm to that August, because we don't wanna come out too soon with a number and then have to shift, because we still see kids, you know, students enrolling over the summer, which could be impactful. Right now, we're feeling good about our staffing model for kindergarten, so that if we have to adjust with those enrollments over the summer, which we know happens, we're staffed accordingly. And we wouldn't be, you know, reducing and then hiring, and that's, that's very difficult to do sometimes, but it also impacts the climate of a school. And so, we, we're feeling confident about our staffing model right now. All good news on that.
Questions, comments on that?
I have one, just related to the numbers. I realize things change over time. So, 2018 actuals show just a little over 2% of the total for half-day. 2019 projections, projections are projections, show almost 10% of the total for half-day. Two-part question. Do we believe that will stay about like that, or is there any, I can't remember, is there any historical data that suggests that it's moving one or the other?
So, there...
And if it will stay or close to stay, where do we think that is? How about a three-part question?
Three-part question. I'm gonna try to answer all three parts in one. We have historical data, and that data shows that probably by October, Clayton and I are projecting October, and we actually have a target number that we think it will move to, towards, that the students who are half-day will transition to a full-day model. We've seen that year after year after year. One year, we started with about 12 students that were half-day, and probably by November, we were down to three. And in part, that's, you know, an uncertainty as whether the students are ready for a full day, maybe not sure what the day looks like when you're moving to full-day kindergarten. They develop relationships with their fellow students fairly quickly, and they just wanna spend the day with the students, and the parents are used to sort of having them go to school, and so they're in a different pattern of understanding about what kindergarten is like. So, Clayton and I think that that 10 will probably be down to five pretty quickly. We're still moving with the blended model, because we knew, we know that works well. We've had lots of conversations about that over the years, as we talked about kindergarten in general and thinking about moving to a tuition-free. So, we're in a pretty good place right now. The numbers on our class sizes right now for kindergarten are reasonable. They're very favorable, as a matter of fact, but we also wanna make sure we have room for any enrollments that take place over the summer, because sometimes we've seen as many as 20 students enroll over the summer. So, we're well situated for those changes, I think.
So, it sounds like that the transition is more sociological than economic.
Yeah. That was number four.
That was cross-agency.
Cross-agency.
Can you read direct or something like that?
Yes.
All right. Anything else on kindergarten? All right. Moving on to public safety building update for Woodward enhancement.
K12?
Oh, sorry. Oh, I skipped the K12.
I saw Kathleen Twish, she was ready.
Sorry, I lost my pen and crossed it up.
We had our last meeting last week. We met to review the work of the subcommittees, and then finalized our presentation, which I'll be bringing to Superintendent Johnson in the next few weeks. So, good, great work.
Lots of great work and really interesting information, and hopefully, give us a lot to think about. Yeah.
Yeah. The committees really did an excellent job.
Yeah, they really did.
Has the committee been formally dismissed by the chair, or is it possible to reconvene the committee when we, to have a chance to take a look at the findings and maybe circle back and, you know, have them engaged in whatever direction we decide to move in? It'd be nice to keep that group still...
I think there was a lot of enthusiasm there. I think also the more time that went by and the more information we got, the more enthusiasm grew, so I would imagine they'd be willing to come back.
I think so. We left it as, we would see what happens when we met, but I think you're right.
It's kinda nice to have the last chapter of the book that you've been writing, right? No, I just wanna thank Principal Valenti for all her hard work with everything else she does to volunteer to take this on, was tremendous, and very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's excellent, great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we can do the public safety building update.
Well, it's going to be a busy summer, and this probably will move into item seven, six, I'll try to keep them separate, but we have had lots of great conversations with Superintendent Galligan. Karen Galligan has been in the office a lot, because she bundled her asphalt bid with the work that we wanted to do at the Woodward School, so we would get the best pricing for that project. The design work is well completed. I think two months ago, two meetings ago, we had the latest update of the design on the screen for everybody to take a look at, we had it on the overhead. And so, what we're waiting for right now is closing out June 30th, or the FY18 budgets. We did earmark a significant amount of this project to be funded from the revolving account, and we do have a large portion of that. The cost came in, no surprise, higher than we had initially budgeted in, or budgeted revolving funds for. Right now, to do the work that needs to be done to make sure it's safe and attractive and fulfills the response, the initiatives that we wanted, which was an easier entry and exit from Woodward. We're, and the lower lot being paved, where the basketball court is, which will enhance that whole play area for students, and also the rec department's work, is around $144,000. In addition to that, we have the humps, which will become bumps, which is the trottyer. When you come over, you're slightly airborne, so they've decided that the most and the best way to deal with those is to grind it completely down, and then NEARIE will end up having some as well, we've talked about that safety, and so that's another $60,000. I've had some wonderful preliminary conversations with Mark Purple, of course, remembering that our budgets have been very favorable, and he's open to the conversation as to whether or not there's some way that we can get some support from the town as well. If that does come to fruition, I'll probably know next Thursday, which means we'll be able to hit the go button with great assurance that the funding is there for that project shortly after July 1. The rec department has moved all of its summer activities. We sort of had a planning session, because our buildings are used a lot for a number of reasons over the summer, all good. It's all good for our students and the community. So, with Keith's willingness and maybe a little arm bending, I don't think so, Keith's willing, just a little.
Twist, a twist.
Twist. All of the recreational activities are going to shift to trottyer, and we're gonna try to keep as much activity away from Woodward as we can, so that when it's ready to be done, there's no encumbrances, there's no, you know, students and so forth. So, that's exciting. Our work will be definitely done before the town begins its work on the safety building, and so there'll just be connectivity when that happens. The gate will be put up, and that will take place, but our work will be pretty much completed. We do know this summer that they're planning to fix the water main in front of the Woodward School on 85, so there's gonna be some traffic issues there as well.
Water and gas?
Yeah, laying new pipe, I think. So, we know that will be an issue, but Karen has that well-planned into her timeline. The one project that may be a little variable, they're working on the trottyer track this summer, from the rec department's successful vote at town meeting, and they're also working on De Petri this summer, I believe, which is the other field in front of the NEARIE parking lot. So, we're gonna be very busy with extended day in our schools and the rec departments in our schools, and then the work over at Finn, so there'll be a lot happening. But, we feel we'll still have access to all of our facilities. While we're on summer projects, I'll just mention another add-on, and Keith can speak to this, because if, if you so are inclined to do so, we've had a lot of experience with that pathway that was brought up a couple months ago, was cleared. Karen revisited that, because sometimes up in that back area, it's hard to determine who really owns responsibility for that. And there've been far more conversations than I probably know about that walkway with conservation and so forth. So, it's about an 1,800-foot path, and about 100 feet, according to Karen's work, right person to assess it, needs to be completely filled in and patched up. So, because all of that equipment, we don't own that equipment as a district, because all of the equipment to do that will be at NEARIE or trotty or in close proximity, it's timely to do it then. And so, that work will be done. It is about a $5,000 repair, but we have that in our revolving account, since we know that that repair work will be ours. So, they're going to, spoke with Karen, and they're gonna be able to capitalize on the fact that the heavy machinery will be there, and then they can just go ahead and do that. Keith, you've mentioned that there, you've had conversations in the past with the conservation committee, and it's been a little bit of a concern, so we're gonna leave that up to Karen to deal with.
That's correct. Yeah, bringing a heavy equipment to do any work back beyond or even into that pathway has been very restricted by conservation. Just the actual bringing of a bobcat back there, any type of loading equipment was too much weight for that particular region at the time. But this was, that conversation goes back, you know, five, 10 years.
Right.
And it hasn't been revisited since then, except for general cleaning and maintenance, which we've taken care of.
Right.
Which has been tough to keep up with. We've worked with NEARIE as well for snow clearing and things like that during the winter months, but, you know, it does need attention, there's no question.
So, Karen has agreed that she would sort of take care of those conversations, so that the work can get done.
Be great.
Yeah. And she had given an estimate of about, if it were to be paved, and in her professional assessment, the entire path does not need to be repaved. That small area needs to be, you know, dug out and filled in and asphalted. The repaving would be about $22,000, which, you know, she's not feeling is necessary at this point. So, it's all good work, and that's added to the summer project list.
So, can I, so is this the path, there's a path from trottyer, and then a path from NEARIE, and they meet up and then go out to Deerfoot?
That's right.
And so, are we talking about the whole thing, both, both parts that go, one to trottyer and one to NEARIE, or just... Or just?
She will repair what needs to be repaired.
But they'll both be open after whatever happens? Okay, interesting. Because I think they're closed for a while, right? Are they still closed?
They're open now. They've been cleared. Yeah, during the winter, March storms, we had some trees down that have since been cleared. So, yeah, it's been cleared, but it still needs some work.
Yeah, it's rough.
It has needed work for many, many, many years. So, yeah, it has needed work for a very long time. But there's been obstacles.
It's kind of like no man's land up there sometimes when you have.
But it's been getting a lot more, it's been getting a lot more traffic over the years. For a while, there was people that never even knew about it. And it was like, what? There's a path? And then, you know, I think it's become more and more popular as the route around the campus has been more and more used. So I think in the last five years, it's gotten a lot more traffic.
So we'll add that to the summer project list, which is good. It's nice to have it all done at once if we can.
Makes sense.
So is Karen like the project manager for all of this asphalt work?
Yes and no. It falls with under the, it falls to some extent under the auspices of Central Office. And so Brian Fantoni is doing some of the project management of these. In terms of the bidding and the work with Woodward, she would be the primary contact because she's working with all of those vendors and so forth. And the walkway that's going to come down from Main Street to connect into the one that we're adding on at Woodward is Karen's project. So the conversations about the wall, the retaining wall that we're putting in place and all of that will be coordinated with Karen through Central Office. In terms of the humps and bumps, which we affectionately call those slowdown obstacles in our driveways, that's again, it's sort of a collaboration between the town and Central Office. You know, we have to make sure that what we're doing doesn't interfere with their work and the timing of it all. Interestingly enough, they're not considered, at this point, and we're having this conversation, sort of general town work for roadways and so forth. It's because it's on the school property. So, and then also the rec department repairs work will be done this summer. So lots of collaboration.
Do we know when the Woodward work is supposed to start?
It will be after July 1. And so I think they gave us a five-week window.
Yeah, mostly July.
Yeah.
Being, looking to be completed by the first or second week in August.
Good. So we have some wiggle room if things?
Yeah.
Don't go.
Not much.
Not as much wiggle room as I would like, but.
Anything else on that? Okay. That brings us to safe school readiness update.
So I do have a little bit of information to share. I think some exciting information. We know that there have been, and I have, and the school committee has received, and the principals, some feedback from the last three, one calls that were sent from one source, whether it was Central or from Trotier or from press releases from Chief Polis and Chief Liver. Through this entire process, as we always do, we work very closely with the police department and to some extent take our charge from their work. The high school, Algonquin and Trotier continue to be active investigations. And the other incident, the Snapchat or Instagram incident did not happen on school property, which is why the police released the press release. So we're still continuing our safety work. We've got an assessment in terms of our practices planned for our administrative retreat this summer to assess the progress that we've made since we benchmarked where we were with our safety practices about seven years ago. And the conversation continues with our community. Last Wednesday, at the Northborough School Committee, we had a presentation through audience sharing from a new forming group, a new group that's forming called the Northborough/Southborough Safety Working Group. I believe that's the name of the group. And they had some wonderful suggestions and ideas. And our, my only request through the school committee was that we meet together and come together in a very collaborative way around a table so we could process through some of their suggestions. We have moved very quickly in that vein. We have an agenda meeting of the small group that have come forward next Tuesday. We, I'll be meeting with them at 7 o'clock to set an agenda, a purposeful agenda, outcome-driven, for a larger meeting that we're going to be holding June 26th at 7 o'clock at Algonquin High School. So we're very excited about this. There's some great ideas that were exchanged. And it all centers around how can we do what we do in a collaborative way, a transparent way, and to be very supportive of our students first and foremost. So that's underway. And I'm delighted that we have a school committee member who's going to be our liaison, Jen Primack, for our health and wellness group, because they will be actively involved in helping us with our symposium idea for our parents this fall. We've had our speaker series, the same, since we launched it five years ago. And this year, in part because of the suggestions from a few folks at the Woodward-Finn Safe School Readiness Presentation a couple of months ago, it became apparent that we need to also provide some educational opportunities for our parents. And so we have decided to change our speaker series format and offer two Saturdays of basically workshops for our parents on a number of topics which they can offer suggestions for. And it'll be sort of working sessions for everyone. And we're excited that the Metro West Coalition will be helping us with this. We have a lot of resources in our communities and we'll be reaching out to our parent community for suggestions as to what kinds of workshops they would like. And it'll be like going to school on a Saturday. Lots of things that they can sign up for. So more to follow. I think our summer will be spent having lots of conversations and trying to create a format for this. And whether we do two Saturdays in the fall or a Saturday in the spring and a Saturday in the fall will be part of the working group. And our health and wellness group will be taking a great lead in that. So thank you for being on that committee. But I do have a contact, an email contact, if anybody in Southborough is interested in working with the Northborough/Southborough Group. And we will post this on our website. And I am going to provide it in a one-call. So if parents would like to participate in this, it will be an email one-call because it will be a web address and a phone number. So that's going to be coming out probably by the end of the week, hopefully tomorrow. And it'll be a great way to really do some work around a number of topics. I'll just mention her name if anyone knows her. It's Sherri Clark. She's a social, I think she's a social worker by profession. So it's, she has a, you know, a wealth of information to share as well. And she did say already that there were a number of Southborough parents who are also actively a part of this forum, this working group. It's their working group. It is not the intention for us at this point to form a study group. We study school safety all the time, but this gives us an opportunity to collaborate with another group in the community. And it's, she has a Facebook page. So I'll send that out.
What was the June 26th meeting?
So June 26th is the date that we identified as a possible date for the committee, the members who are interested and are part of this group on Facebook to come together at the high school. I think we're slated to meet in the library. It's the day after we're out of, the students are out of school, the end of the school year. And really, we're going to work through the agenda that the working group creates next week. We talked a little bit about how can we become a little bit more politically active and reach out to our legislators about some of the things that is taking place at the state house level, which may be very disconnected to what we do in our communities and at our schools. We talked a little bit about doing some research around school-based curriculum programming around social-emotional health. And there were some great suggestions coming forward. And they presented a couple of options, but there are many more out there. So we want to make sure if we're going to invest our time, it's going to be something that enhances what we're already doing in the classroom, in the classroom format. And so probably a research group around that. There's been an expressed interest in exploring how we can reach out to the parent population through communications in a different way. And so we did commit that, we weren't going to commit to anything at this point until we were able to have those conversations. So. It's not going to be another safety forum per se, because we just held one in March. But really a working group with a purposeful agenda. And it's open to anyone.
But this group is leading that, is that right?
Right now, it's this group and the superintendent's office coming together to help hopefully launch us in a, in a direction that's going to bring about some positive outcomes.
Okay, good.
It's a joint venture.
Good. I'm glad to hear we're engaging the community in a positive way. Any other?
It's always the best way.
All right, school lunch update.
So last month, we talked about the need to increase our lunch prices because it had been seven years. And we know that certainly salaries and expense, food costs and so forth have expanded. But we also recognize that it isn't just about looking at the price of lunch. It's really visiting and revisiting our food service offerings for our students. And since we began that conversation, it started here actually, first committee, I think. A lot of great suggestions, some concerns about, you know, how long it takes to serve the line and how long are our students actually getting to eat what they just purchased? And how could we deliver this product to them in a way that provides more time for them? So I met with the 10 cafeteria managers. I think they were all there two weeks ago. It initially started from my perspective around cost. We were clearly not ending in a, in the positive, in the positive financial position at the end of the year. And when that happens, we have to offset it against the operational budget. And so once we began that conversation and moved away from that lens, it became very exciting to see what it is we do and how can we improve what we do. So invited the 10 cafeteria managers to meet in Central. Greg joined us and it was great. All we talked about was food. And how can you not have a great meeting when that's all you talk about is food? And they are the closest to the operation. They had some wonderful suggestions. They're a group of people that are very much invested in what they do and moreover, what the kids are experiencing. So they had a lot of suggestions. So when you bring people together, you know, some great ideas come about. So we've committed to meet with them again before we, that we break. We're looking at our informational tools. I think this came up at Southborough. How do we even sort of market our food, our lunch to the parent community, provide more information? And there's some tools that we're exploring. One of them, we probably already own to some extent and not maximizing that resource. And then there are a couple of other programs out there that I would have eaten anything that showed up on the screen the way they presented the food. And they also, you know, really are very transparent about nutritional values and things like that. So again, hoping, I think Jen's going to be, don't change your mind on this subcommittee. But health and wellness is going to be charged. They're doing some of this too, thank you. Because it naturally falls under their, you know, what they do and the conversations that they have. So we're going to be bringing that back to subcommittee as well. I would like, as I think I mentioned when we voted last month, to make sure that through the conversations that we have about budget, that we revisit our position around the cafeteria. Not every five years, not every four years, but as an annual part of our conversation when we talk about budget, when we talk about food service in general. So to bring that to school committee. So that's kind of exciting. And Jen will have lots of updates for us when she comes back with the committee.
Can I ask, were there discussions about, like, the health value or nutritional value of the foods too and ways that we can improve those kind of offerings or add produce or this kind of thing?
A lot. And that was the primary focus. And we dug deeply. I have, and was going to scan it, but it's about this big. It's from the Department of Education and will distribute that at Health and Wellness. It was just all about the nutritional value. But what I did learn, and I was very much surprised by this discussion, they want to do more scratch cooking. And the reason they want to do more scratch cooking is twofold. One, they can better manage the nutritional requirements by cooking from scratch. So we had a presentation at the high school. We were the host of a superintendent's group engaged in that strategic planning initiative because we know we'll be working on this. And so we treated everyone to lunch as they do us. And they were absolutely amazed at the product that was produced and what we were eating. And Diane Kofer was the cafeteria manager and those chocolate chip cookies, you couldn't come near them anywhere else. I mean, they were just amazing and they were from scratch. And then she said, you have to try the salad dressings. We made these from scratch because we can better monitor the sugar content and the sodium. So if it's prepackaged, that's what it is and you don't have any place to go. That's what you, you have now fulfilled your requirement for the week. So they were very excited about having that conversation, Jen, which is exactly what you were talking about. And then they also talked about maximizing the use of commodities before they set a menu up, which will impact costs. So, you know, what is the commodity list and how can they use that to cook from scratch? And then we talked about, we all remember being in high, in school, whatever grade, and you could smell what was cooking. And you just couldn't wait to go to lunch because what you smelled was just fantastic. And because so much of what we do now isn't scratch, it's prepackaged, you smell nothing. There's no, you know, you're not appealing to the senses. And so if we can do a better job with the menu presentation somehow when we present our menus and we do a lot more scratch cooking, I think that kids will get excited. We also talked about farm-to-table and the various initiatives that are out there. There are some grants and the importance of investing professional development in our cafeteria workers, in our managers. Very excited about that. So, yeah, it was a two and a half hours.
We left hungry.
We just, yeah. Good. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think, I agree. I think it was a great conversation. It was really about, you know, providing students with outstanding meals and choices that helped them establish healthy lifestyles. So it was a very positive meeting.
We just asked them to bring samples this time because it was late in the afternoon. We didn't ask them to bring samples.
That's really exciting. You know, I did come across a couple like USDA grants and foundation grants that are specific to this cook, the scratch cooking basically, or farm-to-table. And so those RFAs usually come out in the fall, but.
And the problem with some of those grants is they're so heavily weighted on the free and reduced lunch percentages as well. But they're always worth looking at because sometimes that isn't something they consider, you know? So, so that's an update.
Thank you.
Are we still doing any partnerships with local farms? I remember they used to have, I think it was mainly in the fall, where they'd be pitching apples and stuff that were local, things like that.
Some of the schools do some individual partnerships. And SEF just funded this phenomenal grant for Finn.
Yeah, the Finley Farms. I'm excited about that.
But that's Finn though, right?
Right. Yeah. So it's one place where it's happening, but certainly something that is part of the conversation as well. I mean, I think some of the conversations initially I've had is that, well, you know, pumpkins grow in October and tomatoes don't grow until June. And it's tough to get always in New England. And now we're not sure where anything grows because it snows in May, you know? So that's always a challenge with that, but it's definitely part of the conversation.
Thank you. And on to summer projects, which we've touched on already.
Oh, I think. I was trying to keep six, seven, six separate, but it just infused itself into the Woodward project. So I think we're set.
Okay. And that case brings us to the superintendent's report to the committee, starting with enrollments.
Enrollments are in your packet. Of course, these are as of May 31st. And we know June, July, and August can bring about lots of changes in this. I think what's particularly interesting is if we flip over the page, you know, for the entire year, I really like this chart that we started a couple of years ago because it really does show how little movement we have. Yeah, how stable a population we have in terms of our students, which really helps the teaching and learning experience in our schools. So to have six throughout the whole year as being the different, the variable is tremendous. So that I think is exciting. And we'll, we'll make sure we have a comparison of both kindergarten half and full day this town, but also who moves in over the summer.
You can see the full day K went up by nine. Were those kids transitioning from half day for the most part?
Yes and no. We did have a few move-ins. But as Superintendent Johnson mentioned, the transition from half to full typically happens in spring, not usually after January. transition from half to full typically happens in spring, not usually after January.
Okay.
It's the spring, sorry, next fall. Season of the sore.
It's June, Mr. Ryan.
That brings us to the fiscal '18 General Fund Expenditure Report.
The report is in your packet, and I would request a vote to approve until audited. This is an incredibly frenetic period of time for us, bringing these budgets to a close, all three bringing to a close, and we're being very mindful of where we are so that we can capture every available dollar to support those very large program, projects that we have underway. The phone system for all, all of our schools, PA system, plus the Woodward project.
I'll move that we accept the monthly General Fund Expenditure Report, which is clear to the budget as of May 31st, 2018, until audited.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Policy distributions, we have quite a few, we approved last month. Those are in your packets. Personnel items, we have the personnel report. We have a new custodian, I think.
Long-term.
And communications. 2018-19 school meeting dates.
Hard to believe this year's over, but look what we have to look forward to. Another slated meeting date starting in September. Paul, I do think we're going to be scheduling a combined meeting for policy this summer. We are in a position where we have three long-awaited policies. If we don't review them this summer, it puts us to march at the combined meetings for approval. So if we approve them and they come out of subcommittee this summer, they will go to combine as a first read in September with some hope that they are approved by December. So there'll be a doodle poll coming out, and just as a reminder, that, to the committee that we changed the policy a little bit ago, which allowed anybody to serve in the place of someone who's appointed on a committee, so that we can have a quorum and get, get some work, the work done. With summer, it's kind of, you know, a time where people are spending here and there with families, so the doodle poll will go out to the entire committee.
Okay.
Question. Just regarding the school community times. So, these are always posted meetings, and there's no prohibition about changing any time for a specific meeting, or, I mean, I know it's like custom and people are used to it.
Not that we've been made aware of.
No, I think it's always posted, you're okay. That was just a one-part question, right? Sorry.
All right. Action on minutes for the main, ninth, 2018 meeting. Any questions, comments on the minutes? If not, motion?
I'll move that we accept the minutes of the school committee meeting on Wednesday, May 9th, 2018.
Okay. Second, any comments now, any edits, anything? All in, all in favor? Bills and payrolls, we have a couple. Agenda items for next month, but September, incredibly.
Well, I think we're going to extend an invitation to SEF. We've extended an invitation to Southborough Education Foundation to present, along with Southborough Organization of Schools, SOS, and I think the discussion has been that we'd like to make this an annual event. We had success a couple of years, but with everybody's schedule, it's very difficult. And all of these folks who work on these committees, whether it's SOS or SEF, do amazing work in, they're on a lot of them sometimes to go around to different meetings. So we're trying to get on their calendars early. We will have the school improvement plan from Principal Muji in September, very excited about that. Updated enrollment numbers, and just an update on all of the projects that have gone on over the summer. To, to name a few agenda items.
Okay. Anyone else have any ideas? Got some time if you come up with any?
Sure. Yeah.
All right. And that brings us to audience sharing, once again. Anyone have anything to share?
Hi, Catherine Rose, to Bantry Road, and I want to thank you Superintendent Johnson and Jen Primack. We have been talking a lot about the path in the back, and I know that Ms. Gallagher did her own assessment, but I did print out some pictures for everyone to look at. It does only affect, I know, a small amount of the population, but there are a lot of tripping hazards, and it can really represent a liability not only to the school but to the town, and it is far greater than 100 feet that needs repair. So I would just, you know, take a look at it yourselves. I'd just invite you to come and take a walk back there. And also, you can see the pictures. It really just represents the area from Deerfoot, from Flag and Deerfoot, into, into the Neary area. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other sharing? That will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Good.
I second that.
Second, is it all in favor? And we are adjourned.